And I want to introduce and thank Ken Choncho, I see him coming over here, um, to give us a welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, welcome to Westminster High School, Westminster Public Schools. We're thrilled to host the, uh, second town hall that council is hosting. I want to just quickly thank City of Westminster and the council. They've been our partners out our Boys and Girls Club, which is located on our Hidden Lake campus, right about Seventy-third and Lowell since its inception. It's the second busiest Boys and Girls Club in the metro area. Boys and Girls Clubs, we offer programs before school, after school, during school, and all summer long. And, and that keeps our students off the streets, our kids off the streets, and, and keeps their minds busy. And I just want to thank the council and thank the city for their continued investment in, in Southern Westminster. It's very important to us and we appreciate it very much. I also want to tell just a quick story that, um, our superintendent and a couple of board members, um, had tried for about a year to set up a meeting with the city to talk about some issues in Southern Westminster, including, um, that our students and our teachers and our, our residents were dealing with in the area. And we had, uh, much difficulty trying to get that meeting set up. And I can tell you after November, within a month or so, the mayor and councillor Seymour, uh, met with us almost immediately. And I want to thank them for that. Um, and, and that meeting and these two town halls, um, are very important. It kind of shows that this council is, whether you agree or not, is at least willing to listen. And I think that's very important. So with that, thank you very much for being here. Thank you for coming to Westminster High School. Let's hope that it's not your last trip to the high school. Come see a play, come see a musical, come see our orchestra or band. You're always welcome. But thank you very much. Thank you.
Oh, there she is. She's right there in the center. Not, I was looking clear up at the booth, booth. So we have students helping with our AV stuff tonight. So let's give them a hand too. Where are my helpers with the mics? We are going to, if you weren't here last time, we'd just like to know who you are and what neighborhood. Five seconds. That's all we need, um, to get us warmed up for the night. So Vanessa, take it on.
Hi, good evening. Vanessa Demont, Countryside, which is one hundred and fourth and Wasworth.
Steve and Jana Kretzel, and we're Metallock, right, Metalark, right off one hundred and fourth and Federal.
We're from Harris Park, Seventy-eighth and Lowell.
Debbie Lee's, East Bay Town Homes, up here at Sixty-eighth and Mead Circle. I, I'm the new president of our HOA, and I'm happy to be here to represent thirty-six townhomes at East Bay Town Homes.
Uh, we're from Country Club Highlands, Hundred and Twentieth and Zuni.
Carol Heller, Seventy-eighth and Quitman.
Nathan Jaskey, Hundred and Twentieth and Bradburn.
And I'm his mother, Kathy.
Christina Wilks, in the West Cliff area.
Harley Brown, Stratford Lakes.
Reggie Reynolds, Ranch Reserve, Hundred and Twelfth and Federal.
Uh, Richard, when Shaw Heights.
I'm Mark Kaiser, Lakeview Estates.
Lori Rinkoff, Shaw Heights.
Wendy Lippman and Rich Kester from Harris Park.
I'm Rich Kester. Did you already do this? Thank you.
Gary Shea, the heart of Westminster, Harris Park.
Shelley Seymour, Westbrook.
Anne Ragsdale, Observatory Heights.
Charlie Ragsdale, Herd driver.
Phyllis Franke, Countryside.
Ryan Woody, Downtown Westminster.
Kimberly Diaz, Legacy Ridge.
Nielsen.
David, we're all from Westminster, uh, West Cliff.
Yeah, this is Jordan from the, uh, Downtown Westminster.
Julian from the Downtown Westminster.
Also Downtown Westminster, Dustin Lawler.
Jeremy Parker, Downtown Westminster.
Marco Perico, Treadwood.
My name's Brian Healy, and I represent Colerich Multifamily, and we have three apartment projects and workforce housing, low-income housing, uh, in the city of Westminster that total eight hundred and sixteen units.
Robert DeLonge, Stanley Lake Homes.
Good evening. I'm Bridget Engel, and I'm up in the Amherst neighborhood, way up on One Hundred and Thirty-sixth.
Rose, Rose Shaw Heights. Chuck and Kathy Busby, Schoenberg Farms Village, Seventy-third and Sheridan.
Peggy Munoz, Shaw Heights.
Bev Bishop, Seventy-fourth and Bradburn.
Evan Siegel, across the street from Front Range Community College.
Annalee Barabee, Harris Park.
Hello there. My name's Pierce Grogan, also Harris Park.
My name's Craig Russell. I live about one block away.
Jan Mider, Countryside.
Chris Stimson, Adams County.
Tom Jurgens, Sheridan Green.
Jane Banson, I live in Waverly Acres.
Emily Brooks, Highland Greens East.
Bill and Judy Pickrell, Highlands at Westbury.
Carol Campbell, Legacy Ridge.
Jamie J. Summers, Lowell and Seventy-second.
Lou and Kathy Pasco, North Ridge.
Nancy and Dave Paul, The Ranch.
Roberta Born, High Point.
Bernice Aspenwall, High Point.
Brenda Garcia, from the block of Sony Seven Hundred, Knox Court.
Jan Spratt, Legacy Ridge.
I'm Luke Sarzakie. I'm the reporter for the Westminster Window.
Grover Sardison, Harris Park. Debbie Teeter, co-owner of the Harris Mansion in Harris Park, founder of the city of Westminster.
Bill Teeter, Harris Park, and my wife wouldn't sit with me.
Robin and Rollin Sanford, Harris Park.
John Link, Shaw Heights.
Max and Christie Math from North Hidden Lake, and also welcome everybody here, Vice President of Westminster Public Schools.
Mike Litzu, the Nines at Legacy Ridge.
Kathleen Robinson, The Villas at Sheridan Green.
Corinne Anaya, Seventy-seven hundred Knox Court, Harris Park.
And lastly, Tracy Spence from Sheridan Green.
Did we miss anyone? We have one, someone over here.
Joshua Herr, Franklin Square, just north of Westminster Downtown.
Hello, Alex Koszitsky. I'm at Shaw Heights.
Back to you, Mayor.
Okay, so tonight, last time we told you we are here to listen and get questions and give you the answers that we can tonight. Sometimes we won't have them. So someone will get back to you. Um, because some of the times people got up to speak, it went on for a long time and we didn't get to all the questions. So tonight, you were asked to put your question on a card and sign it so that when we call, uh, read the question, we will also give the name and we would like you to give us a wave so that we know you truly are here and not a fake name. And, um, that's how we're going to run the show tonight. Uh, we ask that everybody, we don't always have to agree. You don't have to agree with whatever the question is or what the answer is, but we do need to be respectful and listen. Um, outbursts and clapping just take away time from our questions. So councillor Obi, you want to pick a question? Doesn't mean you have to answer it. Yes, you can add to the box, just raise your hand and one of the runners will bring it up. I am Nancy McNally, your mayor.
Councillor Obi Zadi.
Sarah Normella.
Mayor Pro Tem, Dave Demont.
Lindsay Emmons.
Rich Seymour. Okay, can you all hear me? First question is from Kelly Stepcott. The question is, are there any programs for the youth to help with marginalized communities so that they are being challenged, not bored? I think that's an excellent question, Kelly. Is Kelly here? Hi, Kelly. All right, I can start, and if anyone else wants to add. I think that as a council, so we have had programs in the past, we have some programs right now, but we are working on several initiatives, I would say, to increase the amount of culture in the city. I think when we talk about youth, youth need things to do, they need activities, right? And that's one of my passions for sure, is making sure that we have recreational activities for our youth to partake in. That's not just open space and walking through trails, which we have a lot of, right? But I think that there are opportunities to increase the number, the number of recreational activities for our youth. And as more youth move into the city, they need something to do. And it's a way of keeping them here rather than them going to our neighboring cities to hang out, like Old Town or Nevada, right? So one of the things that I think would be a huge boost would be neighborhood block parties. You know, we have some of those on the calendar, and so the city is, is working on bringing more events like that, that can bring people out and get the youth to connect with each other, because that's important too, right? The synthesis of not just my neighbors and my neighborhood, but, you know, who are my neighbors, right? Who else is out there? So that's something that is a priority, definitely for me, and I know for council, we are looking into it. Thank you.
And just remind council, don't discard your questions. We just want to know which ones we've already answered.
Okay, this question is from Bill Baraya, sorry if I'm killing the last name. Why are street racers continuing to use our streets and I-36, especially on Friday and Saturday nights, late, 12 to 1:30 a.m.? Police I have contacted said they have no control and cannot stop. So I know that this is not just along this area, we have racing occurring throughout the city, and from, I think we can potentially get staff to answer this a little bit better than how I will, but I will say that our police are working with other jurisdictions to try and reduce the overall, you know, the street racing. You know, it's a problem, like I said, throughout the city, and they are definitely aware and working on this. Okay, yeah, the mayor says that there's, on our website, or there is a website? Okay, we'll get it on the website in terms of what we are doing to work on this effort.
My question is from John Palmer, and it's, when can we get large item cleanup back in the budget? So I appreciate the question, and we certainly are going into budgets, so we can take this back and debate whether or not we're going to add that. About large budget pickup? Or large item pickup, sorry. And I know this was something that we had to make some decisions going into COVID. This was one of the things that, that belief suffered, if I remember correctly. So now that we're on the other end of COVID, we certainly can discuss this and whether or not we want to bring that back. So thank you for the question.
All right, so I apologize, I spilled some water and it's traveling, so if staff can help me with napkins, or thank you, I appreciate it, I apologize. Okay, so this question is from Mark Kaiser. Why does it take so long to move homelessness or homeless off private property and clean up the trash? Great question, this was a question that came in our previous town hall, kind of stemmed from it, and we as a staff, I'm going to get out of the way, we as a staff and council have worked together to combine a report that says, a protocol that says how and when, how to compassionately remove homelessness who are within Westminster. And so it may take a long time, and I mean a long time as in, it could be a day to maybe even two weeks or longer. And that's because that we have identified currently that there are 17-plus encampments within Westminster, and we have currently one homeless navigator on staff that is working with each of these individuals to place them in programs and/or homes and/or shelters, something to get them within a productive, within a productive means of society. And so with 17 homeless camps, it could be as many as maybe 100 people. And so that may, may take time with one person. We are working to hire another homeless navigator within the next few weeks, and so that second person will then be able to then share the responsibilities of moving them off private property or public property. So it will take time, we are just, we're addressing this as a council, we're just setting protocols within the last, I want to say, two to three months. And we are acknowledging that this is a issue for our residents, and something that we are working on as a council and as a city.
Real quick, I'd like to add to what councillor Emmons just shared, I know that this has been a hot topic, and there's a lot of debate about how we handle it, and I think that the council wants to make sure that, as councillor Seymour calls it, it's a continuum of how we deal with the situation. So we're trying to figure out ways to connect people to resources before then we have to ask them to move along. But one of the things I wanted to share with you specifically after one of the last ones, the mayor and I went and we toured a homeless encampment that's down off of 72nd and Bradburn. And I know the homeless navigator went to that location afterwards, and I'm trying to think what the actual number was, but a substantial amount of the people down there, when they were given hotel vouchers, they weren't allowed back into the hotel because of, you know, some sort of prior interaction with that hotel. So I bring it up because it's, it is a difficult situation, and when people, you know, go through homelessness or they have these situations, that makes it difficult for us to navigate. So I just wanted to add some of that because it just really shows, I think, beyond the extra budget money that we've been putting towards the issue, that we are working on it. So I hope you'll have patience with us, and this certainly isn't just a Westminster issue. You could drive from one end of the metro area to the other, and, you know, this is unfortunately an increasing thing that we're seeing in our state and across the country.
I just wanted to add to councillor Emmons and Mayor Pro Tem, one thing that was helpful for me to understand was that it takes about, staff told us about two weeks for our homeless navigator to help place somebody in either temporary or more permanent housing, and that's either a person or a family. So just thinking about that, that timeframe and the amount of people that are in our community, and our one homeless navigator, hopefully that we will add into two. I will also say that the counties are doing work on this as well, we are not alone, and there is work being done. Jefferson County is a little bit further ahead, they are building more temporary housing and affordable housing to have more places to provide people with. Adams County is a little bit further behind, they're still coalescing together and figuring out what their, what their strategy is going to be. But hopefully that means that, again, we're making progress both locally and regionally.
I'd like to add on that too, this is the add-on question. We as a council have had staff prepare a policy, though my great disappointment with the policy is there's no time limits on it. There's no time, so how are we going to judge if the policy is working if we haven't put a measurement to it? And I think that's one way we can improve the policy, is to put a timeline on it.
All right, this question is from Ann Ragsdale. Hopefully you can hear us okay, because we're not getting any feedback, so if not, holler. On Tuesday, March 29th, there was a YouTube virtual meeting with, regarding the Uplands. It never happened. We were told, as were others who attempted to join in, that the meeting was a prior date, although not notified. Please tell us, okay, so that's, that's the first part of that question. We're going to have to get staff to answer that because we're not notified of those meetings, because those properties still come up before us as far as the planning, so we do not look in on those advanced meetings or look on, on the development project, don't look in on the planning commission meetings until those are over, because we have to make a judgment on those. So I will get staff to find out what happened on March 29th on that virtual meeting, and we will, as we said too, we're going to get, every one of these are going to be answered, even though if we don't get to all the questions, everyone is going to be answered and they're going to be on the website. And then also, we'll have to get staff and the developer to, the question was, how the connection is going to work on La Place Court? We'll get that out too and get that answered, so.
And the next question is from really Brenda Garcia, a very important question. What is the status on major cleanup and 7731 Knox Court, the house that blew up? I'm going to have to defer this answer to the mayor, because I do not know what the status of it is. I know that council was sent a report from staff on a meeting held, and it sounded to me a very good thing, but other information's come to me that is not. So mayor, can you answer this question for us, or?
Well, and the one I picked has Knox Court, what is the plan, another eyesore from, I think it's Debbie Teeter. So what we do know is there was a death in that household. We have not seen the coroner's report yet, so for some of what we can and can't talk about has to deal with that, because we don't know, and it is still a crime scene. What I do know is the day of the wind, which day was that? Yeah, every day this week. Anyway, whatever day it was, it Friday or Saturday, we had a windstorm, and I do know we had staff out there making sure the tarps were still secure, picking up stuff from other households and whatnot. I don't know any more than you do, Mr. Baker, I just know it is a crime scene, we cannot openly talk about some of the things because of that, but I do know that staff is working with CDPH around the health issues. There are some things that aren't under our purview, and that's hard to understand, but we are working with all the partners that have to deal with this. The insurances companies are involved, there's a lot of pieces that are involved in this, and we don't know a whole lot because it hasn't, we don't know all the, all the pieces yet, so. Okay, Mr. Obi.
So I'm trying not to look. It's all random, anyway. Nelson Diaz, are you here? Hi Nelson, your question is, HOA is requesting the addition of trees and shrubs. We already have $600 a month, a $600 a month water bill a few times a year. With this drought, are we required to plant new trees and shrubs? I don't want dead trees. I'm sure no one in the city would like dead, dead trees and shrubs. I think this is an interesting question, I'm not sure if anyone in council has the answer to this, but with HOAs, quite often, they impose real rules that aren't city-related, right? And it's hard for a city like Westminster to tell them, to tell an HOA what to do with their own bylaws. So what I would say is if staff can get the name of your HOA, and maybe we can look into this issue further and get back to you, is that all right, Nelson? Thank you.
If we could get somebody that has the cards to get to him, so we get a name and number, that would be wonderful, and put on it what the issue is, so somebody can get back.
So this is Dave Paul. The question is, city staff has been reduced due to COVID. The city seems to be operating successfully at that staffing level. Are there any reasons to increase the staffing to cover the COVID vacancies? Well, right now, staffing for almost every city is, has suffered significantly through COVID, not only through, some cities had to do layoffs, Westminster did not. However, we did lose people during this, over the past couple of years. I would say one of the departments that's most impacted right now is our police department, and I would say that they probably want to be functioning at a higher level than they currently are. We've been doing a lot with, working a lot with the department and with the fire department to, to hire really talented individuals to help fill the vacancies that we have. We also have, have had a tough time hiring parks maintenance staff and other maintenance staff for public works. These jobs are essential to keeping our parks clean, maintaining our roads, maintaining our facilities, and so I know that we are working to achieve staffing levels that will make sure that we're bringing and keeping all of our facilities and infrastructure to the level that we all want and expect of the city. So, you know, there are a lot of other functions that, in departments, that have suffered losses in terms of staffing, and I think a lot of what they are doing is critical. And so I'm hoping that we will actually continue to bring our staffing levels back up. And, yeah, I'll leave it at that.
If anybody has swimmers out there that are teenagers, we need them to sign up for lifeguards or our pools won't be open.
So the next question is from Ann Ragsdale, and it's, with the police department in dire need of additional qualified personnel, perhaps consolidation of other departments in the area may be an answer. So I think that might be difficult with jurisdictional lines, I'm not sure what that would look like. I know there's like special districts for fire departments, I've not seen a police department do that. However, there is mutual aid that we enjoy between departments. I know probably in one of the worst times in my neighborhood, when Jessica Ridgeway was taken, you would routinely see Broomfield Police going through our neighborhood because the police were working the case, so they were making sure that our neighborhood was safe. So, you know, there may be something that we could look at that. As a city, though, I will tell you, some of the stuff that this council and the prior council did is making sure that this is an attractive place to come work if you're a police officer. We've just recently approved retention bonuses to keep people, we have some bonuses to attract people to sign on. But I will tell you that this isn't just a Westminster problem. Colorado is, and this was from our chief, this last two weeks ago or week ago, was sharing that Colorado is looked at as one of the most anti-police states. So getting people who want to come be a police officer in Colorado is, is difficult, just like it is in the rest of the nation. So I would encourage you, if you, if you don't like the way things are going, look at what's going on at the State House. This is my opinion, the rest of the council can have their opinions about it, and if they would like to speak, but between things like allowing up to four grams of fentanyl, which could kill 2,000 people, to the things that they've done over the last couple of years, it's made it very difficult for people to want to be police officers or to be police officers. So I think that there's some, some Colorado changes that need to happen, in my opinion, but as far as what is in my control and this council's control, we'll continue to make sure that this is a great place that people actually seek after, that want to be in law enforcement.
All right, and this answer comes from a previous question from almost all of us, but before I jump into this one, I just wanted to jump on Mayor Pro Tem's question about the large item pickup, as it was reduced during COVID. I just want to remind all of our residents that you have the opportunity to email council while we do the budget process, so starting from now until September, October, to say, this is what we like to see in our, our city, whether it's capital improvement projects or it's programmatic such as a large item pickup. And that is something that we can look at as a council to say, prioritize, do we bring back large item pickup, or do we continue to maybe prioritize different items? So keep that in mind, you can always email council and say, I would like to add this to the list for budgetary purposes, and then we as a council can... And then we, as a council, can talk and decide whether or not it fits our strategic plan and to prioritize it. So keep that in mind. This question comes from Kathleen Robinson. The question, as I mentioned, kind of stems from previous answers from all of us. Does Westminster have a plan in the works to address the increasing number of homeless who are setting up camp on the Big Dry Creek open area? The Westminster Police Department seems not to have authority to do any intervention. I called them when the man in the tent 100 feet behind my, the back of my fence had a very loud and profane psychotic episode April 15th. My concerns is safety of neighborhood children who use that area as a shortcut, human waste and trash, and interference with established wildlife. And as mentioned, and this kind of stems back to Councilor Numela's question with staffing, is that we are working to increase staffing with not only Parks and Rec, because this is a multi-level, multi-department solution that we're trying to accomplish with addressing homelessness. So it involves PD, it involves our homeless navigator, involves Parks and Rec. And so all of these combined with low levels of staffing are, we're working to make sure that we address this. We recognize it's an issue for residents in our city and we're doing, we're making great strides in trying to accomplish your concerns.
And I just want to remind people, actually, the police aren't the ones to call. If you would email one of the counselors, we get it to the staff that's dealing with this. If they need to be trespassed, that's when the police department comes in. But we have the protocol steps before that. So we know of, are we up to 18 camps that we know of?
Seventeen or eighteen.
Seventeen or 18. And we need your eyes and ears. We only get so many places. We're only seven people. I I welcome the phone calls or the emails because I can shoot that. The email is easiest because I can shoot the information of where it is, where it's located, how many people directly to the city manager who gets it out to the team that's working on this. So we just really ask you to be the eyes and ears. Mark Kaiser just wrote me this afternoon before we came here and it's on private property. So my question to our city manager was, are we telling and informing our businesses how to ask for them to be trespassed? They don't have to put up with that, but they're the ones that have to initiate and make the call for a trespass. So we first need our businesses to be informed. And he shared with me that sometimes the store where he saw them at is changing managers a lot. That's great information because then we can tag that so that they know every 60 days to 90 days, they just go and make sure that property owner knows that what they need to do to not have that in the neighborhood.
Said a lot of what I was going to say. The only other thing I would add is when you report them to us, you know, I understand people get frustrated at the timing and I, you know, we do need to keep working on this protocol and what it looks like. But one of the things that they do when you report one of those camps, when we get it to the right people, is they go and evaluate the camp. So some of those unsafe living conditions, like the human waste, those are things that they can start tackling before they they go to the steps of connecting people to places to stay, to to possibly trespassing them. And we've seen them do it since we've, you know, in the last couple of months where camps have been pointed out to us and we've been able to get the right staff to go take care of those issues. So please understand there's a lot of the process and some of those actions can happen pretty quickly and some of them take a little bit longer.
This question comes from Brian Healy. I thought maybe. What can you do to overhaul your official development plan and plan approval process? The way it functions right now is counterproductive to its goal by adding onerous cost and timing to make property improvements or bringing online units for workforce housing. I would, I would like to have our staff have a chat with you and other developers as far as our processes. Our review process, especially now that we're at infill, is that is probably going to slow down a little bit. The other side of that is we're short planning staff now too, like every department. So that that has not helped that part of it either. Is that I think especially, and this isn't in your case necessarily, but we talked about HOAs and how much grass they have or how many trees. That's part of their official development plan. And if that needs to be changed, then we need to work with those units so that they can make changes to their own HOA. And that that process council has talked about already since November is is streamlining that and working with the process. In my mind, as a business owner, we cannot cost our residents and businesses more money because of time delays. Other than right now, it may be a good thing because maybe the cost of goods will go down a little bit and help with with that part. But we have to streamline our processes. We need to bring it all online so everyone can see it all at the same time. So as changes are made, everybody can participate in that. But we also have to, especially in the official development process or what we call the ODP, when that's signed off on, that's that's go time. And so there shouldn't be any changes on that final sign off or if it's one that comes to council. So we want to make sure it's right. So we have to balance what's right or what's fast too. But I appreciate that and we'll be chatting.
Okay, my next question is from Jane Banzin. Excellent saying. Water is our most valuable asset in Westminster. Agreed. I understand water that serves the Highland Hills Golf Course via, okay, the Niver Canal is to be reduced this year. I do not know. I have been led to believe that Highland Hills owns separate water rights. And that's how they water the golf course. Is there any staff that says I'm mistaken on that? Anyone on council know anything different than that? Highland Hills owns its own water rights.
Mr. Chan, is Mr. Chancho still here? Does anybody know?
Are you?
Briefly, I can say that yes, that's true. Highland Hills owns numerous water rights and has drilled wells on that property. Numerous, I think two or three wells on that property.
Okay, so basically Highland Hills owns its own water rights and it's up to them to use them the way they wish. The next part is, are you as a council willing to like address the rate increases rather than ever sell our water rights? I have been led to believe that we have never sold water rights, ever. We only buy water rights when they're available, but there are none to have anymore. It's my guess that every member of this council would never sell the public water rights to any private entity. Okay? And as far as addressing rate increases, this really council has lowered the water rates. Some of us wanted to lower them more than we have, but we took a sort of really middle position because we wanted to get alternative costs for the new water plant that we have considered building.
I thought I was louder than I was. But at any rate, just looking into the future, personally, I'm willing to pay more to keep the water that we have, even if I have to use less. I don't want to have to buy it from a private vendor. And I want council to at least be aware of that concern and never consider selling that asset. That's the most valuable thing we own, I believe.
Okay, as I say, I doubt anyone on this council would sell any of our water rights. We will always have enough water if we service the people in the city as we are now. If we attempt to add tens of thousands of population to the city, then there could be a fight over the water we have. Yes.
And my question is from Peggy Reynolds. There you are. What will be done to minimize, eliminate racing between 112th and 120th on federal? I live where I have 112th, I have Westminster Boulevard and they get pretty speedy there. 104th, then there's the Turnpike where they will slow you down so that they can, from Church Ranch exit to Broomfield is a straightaway, so you're dealing with that. And I never know where to call in and tell them it's happening because it is so surrounding me. And I often say to the officers, come by and check me out on Friday or Saturday nights because I don't know where this is coming from. When I've talked to them, and I've watched this once when I was over getting dog food for the pugs, there was one night where there was a long line coming off of 36. And they were piling in to Walnut Creek's area there with all of the, they knew the shops were closing between nine and 10. So there was probably 300 cars there. And that creates a danger for officers going in to do anything because at that night shift, we have fewer and they could be being set up. So it, there's lots of things to consider. We do have this website and they want to hear from people because there's other, they are going from our place to to Broomfield, to Federal Heights, to North Glen. They're everywhere and we, they're working together. And so once we, we'll put this website on your, on your, on the, we'll put the website for the racing on our website as an answer so that you can find it. I don't know if you did get the police little card that has the QR code. That also probably has it on that app. It has everything. I use it because it has the phone numbers on the upper right hand when you open that app. And so I'm always calling in graffiti because I can't take a picture while I'm driving and I'm going to forget where it was. So I just call in the car hands free and say, oh, there's some water bottle right under you, Dave. Or, yeah. And so anyway, we'll get, get that on. Yep.
Sorry to jump in line, but my question was pretty much the same is from Kelly Steckah, I think. Sorry if I get that wrong. But it's what's being done about the consistent racing on 36 and the side streets. So you heard that and and a lot more detail also from Councilor Numela. The other thing I wanted to add, and this is back to how police departments work with each other, this isn't a Westminster problem. I mean, they come through here, obviously, but we don't own the problem, I guess is my point. It is our problem, but it's a metro problem. And so like a lot of metro problems, the police departments actually have a task force. And so they've started working with that task force to try to figure out ways that they can shut down the racers. But this is another one of the things to the mayor's point that we need your eyes out there so we know where they're happening. Because I'll be honest with you, if you, if you know anything about that, it's, they're organized. It's not like, you know, back when you just pull up next to somebody with a fast car and decide you're going to race them. Not that anybody up here would do that. But they actually know and they they radio or call each other ahead, whatever the kids do now, and they talk to each other. But we know it's a serious problem and people do get hurt with it. So the more that you share, the better. And so please do look for the the information on the website when they post it.
Councilor Yuzadi.
Thank you, mayor. So my next question, I have a second one from Kelly Steckah also, and it's also related to speeding. She said that a, so North Turnpike has recently had a deadly accident. Speed has been an issue constantly. I would like to see the accident concrete barriers put back to keep people walking their dogs safe. Yeah, so you've heard what council has said already on speeding, but I just want to add during, during my campaign last year, I was walking and I visited a home. I don't recall her name. I was trying to think of her name this whole time. I think it's Lydia. And she told me the one thing, you know, if I vote for you, the the one thing I've been asking for for years, and she's not the only one that told me this feedback, but is to do something about the speeding. And speeding in Westminster, it has grown to be a significant issue. I brought it up, many of us have brought it up. Well, I would like to see, in addition to what everyone has said, you know, we have a process. So we have a traffic department, basically, and they look at various mitigative efforts to try to see what we can do with the speeding that's happening. But what I would like to see is kind of a one-time analysis where we holistically look at and prioritize areas in the city that have, you know, speeding as a issue. And I think that there are so many of them and it, and we keep getting feedback on this. And safety, as we all know, is one of our top priorities. I would like to really take a deep dive on this and look at, you know, so I think it was consulate Emmens that had a great idea on a roundabout, right? So there's in North Glen, was it North Glen? They have an, they they put in a roundabout in the area that had speeding and it slowed down traffic. I think that there are physical barriers that we could look at because, you know, stop signs and traffic lights and speed bumps, there are, there's cost to all of that, right? So we have to prioritize appropriately. But so we're about to enter the budget process. So I think right now would be a great time to holistically look at this and see if we can increase the budget so that we can put in more of these physical barriers and stop signs and traffic lights in places that need it the most. So thank you for your questions on speeding and it's something definitely that's top of mind.
So this is from Reggie Reynolds. What are the most, sorry, what are the latest plans for Promenade and Westminster Mall areas? So the Promenade has been a work in progress for, I would say, like 10 years. It was built as a sort of internal retail area where you could walk along and it was kind of inwardly focused. Well, about 10 years ago, it was really suffering. The retailers were leaving. It was hard for them to be seen and to get sort of pedestrian traffic and get people visiting their restaurants and stores. So you probably noticed several years ago, there was a road that was introduced right in front of the mall, of the, the theater. And that was intentionally placed there so that there would be more visibility and access to all of the businesses within the Promenade. The other piece is that with the Promenade, it was, the retail was suffering there as well because there just wasn't enough traffic there in terms of people coming to the site. One of the ways to address that, especially now, because retail is so much different, really after COVID, that to bring in other uses, to bring in people who are working there during the day, people who live there on site, because that is a built-in population to help keep that retail alive. And I, I don't know, does anybody go to the Promenade and enjoy going over there? The movie theater, they're great restaurants. In order to keep those great things there, we do need to have population that helps to feed it in addition to us going there. And so you'll notice right now, I was just down there the other night going to the movies, that there's a big development occurring right now, right where the rock bottom used to be, that is a residential project. I'm not sure what exactly it is. It is a multifamily rental project, but that will bring people there to the site. That's a diversification of the uses, which is again, is important as our retail sites, instead of just being, you know, a one-shot deal in terms of just retail, we're mixing it up. We're allowing people to be able to live, live in a place and also have amenities as well. And it's also a great location for density because it's right next to a freeway and transit. So density can be very well placed. The other thing with the Westminster Mall or downtown, that is going to, you know, it's a, that's a good 20-year-long project that's been under construction for about five years and it will continue to be under construction. You'll continue to see things rise out of the ground over the next 10, 15 years. The idea with that site, it's 105 acres. It will have around 2,500 residential units there, about 2 million square feet of office and about 750,000 square feet of retail. That includes what you see there now. It includes like the Alamo Drafthouse and some of the restaurants. There will be a market hall right at the There will be a market hall right at the Central Square. That should be opening later this year. That's going to be a great destination. And the idea goes back again to that mix of uses. Got to have people working during the day, people living there at night to help provide and energize those retailers and those amenities throughout the day, throughout the week. There are townhomes going up right now. There is going to be a condo building. And you'll continue to see both ownership and other residential opportunities there. One of the next projects will be an office building that will be going up. So a lot of activity.
All right. This is from Steve Kretzel. Steve here? No. Oh, oh, hi. With our water issues, why does the city continue to allow development, especially multifamily dwellings? Great question. I will say that since the inception of what I know to be Westminster, we have continued to create and develop a comprehensive use plan. And that is a plan for the entire city, for land development and how we want our city to be built out. And in this recent, I would say last year, recent timeframe, that comprehensive plan of 2040 came before council. And council at that time did not agree with what was in the plan. I believe that it was set for, I want to say about 150,000 population currently. We're at 116,000 population. And so, it seemed out of kilter, out of balance with where we're already at because we have less than 5% left of Westminster to be developed or have developed land. And so, with that, this council is committed to revising and working with staff on developing a comprehensive use, land use plan that addresses not only these water issues, but the full development of Westminster. With that said, past councils have gone askew from the comprehensive land use plan where it said a certain amount of population could be developed for a certain type of development, and they increased it, which then puts out of balance the water that was planned for the development. And so, that kind of leads to multi-variable levels when it comes to our water, our land use, and how we're developing Westminster. So with that, we are continuing to look at the comprehensive land use plan that should come back before council. I don't want to put a timeframe to it. But we have asked staff to make sure that that is a priority for us as a council to address, that we are in alignment not only with how much we have left to develop in Westminster, but our water use plans. With that, I know that as a counselor, my time on council, speaking for myself, I'm sure my colleagues have others to say, but anytime I'm looking at a land use plan, water is the first priority that I'm looking at and to make sure that if we develop or if we approve our land use development plan, that there is enough water for those that will be living and inhabited in that land.
I just wanted to quickly add a couple of things to that. I mean, this isn't one ecosystem. So we've had questions about water. We've had questions about population and building. These things all intersect. And so, when you talk about cost of water and our utility, the more people we have, not only is it a supply issue, but it's also how fast we can pump water. So the more people we have, when you have the high use, that's what really costs us a lot of money. Because if we have more population in the summer months, they have to be able to accommodate those high water marks, even though maybe through the rest of the year, we're not pushing as much out. So that does have a cost on our system as far as what it can do and what kind of where it gets. The other thing I wanted to address, and it kind of goes to both of these questions as far as the Promenade and the comprehensive land use plan. One of the other things that this council has put a pause to is there has been a practice, if a development in a certain approved area is under a certain acreage, it can go forward without actually going to council, and they can do administrative approvals. We've said that we don't want that to happen anymore while this council is the seated council. So we're looking at how we adjust that because we, as the majority of the body, wanted to make sure that we actually have eyes on that stuff because we feel like residents elect us to make sure that, you know, there's eyes to everything that's built in the city so that we're balancing between water, traffic, you know, population, and all the things that come along with those decisions that we make.
I would just say, the comprehensive plan looks at transportation as well as land use, our overall services like water and our other utilities. It looks at parks provision. And these are the things all combined that we integrate into our comp plan. I would say that the comp plan is, usually just looks out 20 years. It's very, and really, it needs to be updated every 10 years or even sometimes every five years because things change so much. I mean, just look at the last few years and how different our landscape and how different development trends are. So this is something that we need to work on together. I think staff also has some great talent within. We have hired over the years planners and water engineers specifically that are literally teaching the classes in the region, in the state, in the nation on how do you integrate land use with water. So we have some great expertise in hand to help work with the community to create a vision for growth. I would say, I just looked it up the other day that we, between, it was at 1980 and 2000, we doubled in population size from 50,000 to 100,000. And now, in the past 20 years, we've grown by about 16,000. So definitely, we're slowing in terms of the growth. And now, we just want to be very thoughtful and careful as to where that growth is going to be.
Another land use question, Debbie Lisi, East Bay Townhome Association? This question regards the Hidden Lake Open Space R4 zoning. So that's one of the zoning designations, four units per acre. The new development proposal for that area, how will this affect access for police and emergency vehicles and pedestrian access and safety? I do not believe this zoning, has this come before council?
I don't believe it has.
Okay.
This is a proposed development that's right on our border here, right here in our backyard. I know the kids from the high school will use that path to go across Hidden Lake. And the whole development that's proposed is an R4. They're going to take those houses that are on Lowell Boulevard there, just on the 68th and the west side. Thank you. And so, it's a 5 and 1/2 acre parcel, and it is unincorporated Adams County, but it's our backyard. So it affects all of us here.
Okay.
And so...
Then that will not be coming before council?
No. Well, will you make any comments about the overall development? Because it is, you know, our border. It's our safety.
In most jurisdictional issues that I have seen on council is that if it borders another one of our jurisdictions, and we do this as a city, we reach out to our partners and say, "This is what's coming here. Can we have your comments?" Which we do in all affected areas. So if it, you know, because school district borders overlap, we ask comments from every affected group. So school districts, police departments, fire departments, you know, if there is large traffic from faith-based communities in certain times, or offices, or employers, we ask them to make comments on the plan. So even though that is in unincorporated area, and we, that is one question that comes before us too. On our planning packets, we get a comment. And during some of the meetings in front of Planning Commission and council, the chief of police and the fire chief come up and talk to us about ingress and egress and the safety. And they have to, that's a little more than just comments from them. They have to sign off on that part of the project. So our partners, and we do this too, and our partners in Adams County, when it borders our property, they come to our planning people and ask for comments because, you know, this, we all, half the time, you don't know what border you're in if you're in Arvada, Westminster, unincorporated. So, yeah, our partners do a good job with that too, and our police will have a comment. Especially the police and fire departments too. We have a lot of intergovernmental agreements with them to where, right now too, in integration of the radio systems, is that especially in fire, they're sending the people and the equipment to the right place, regardless of what department it is too. So they all want to cooperate on that.
Right. Great. Thank you. One little quick follow-up with this. Because it is a border, can we ask the developer if it goes forward? It's proposed now, but it's right on our line, all the way down there. Can we ask them for a good neighbor agreement?
Yes.
Okay, to work with all, everything?
Yes. There was a development right near our neighborhood where just a small group of homes, but the neighboring HOA asked, "Can we work together to have a shared fence?" So that, you know, and then what size of the berm? There was no elevation difference, so it's not like someone looking in someone else's window. And they worked it out, and it worked out great. And the neighbors were happy, the developers happy, so, yeah.
That's great. This is a five-story development that's being planned there with 154 apartments?
Okay, so then that's not R4.
Pardon me?
Okay.
Oh, that's right.
Okay, so definitely reach out to the Adams County Commissioners.
Okay.
We can give you their phone numbers.
Sorry to take so much time, but thank you for your answer. It helps.
I was just going to say the same exactly, Councilor Seymour. So just definitely go talk to the Adams County Commissioners meetings because that's, those are the people who are going to approve it.
I'm beginning to doubt the randomness of these cards. I don't know how it's being fixed either. This is from really Emily Brooks. For those of you who don't know, Emily and I have exchanged emails. She is a very informed and passionate person on this topic. The question is, Denver's summer watering plan for residents was covered on the local news recently. What plans we bring, put into place for Westminster to encourage responsible summer water usage since we will continue to be in a moderate to severe drought? West of the Minster, because of the foresight of councils before us, is in a very wise position. Because we have the water ownership we have and the bucket to store it in, we have never had mandatory watering restrictions, even in the horrible drought of 2002. Never had mandatory. We've always had watering recommendations, always. We will never flout our water, really, situation. We'll never try to engender envy on the part of our neighbors because we know where we live. We know how valuable water is. Plus also, our recommendations follow good stewardship of our city, of our lawns, and of our water. So it just makes sense that we practice conservation. We don't waste water. We don't do anything. And maybe this is a good time to note that nearly a quarter of the water we use, we basically process about 6 billion gallons of water each year. Two of our golf courses are watered with the recycled water, the purple water. So this is not in that equation. But of the 6 million gallons that we process, the city uses nearly a quarter of them. And the biggest savings could be made by, okay, the city looking at how we use water.
Quick add to that. At least three of us that were here before November were part of approving a drought management plan. So the city does approve the drought management plan that still is in place. So if you follow that, you can look it up on our website. It tells you the different levers of when we would actually take action. So if we got into a situation, even with our abundance of water where we thought that it was prudent, and this was developed by staff, then, you know, we would take those measures, and it kind of is an auto thing. So they already know what levels you would have to get to in order to hit those. The other thing that I would mention is, we still have continuing programs where we're encouraging people to conserve. And so, those are things that people can participate in, and I certainly encourage you to participate if you're passionate about that.
If I could add on that too, is especially over the winter, every month, council gets a water storage update, snowpack update. And then, we also, as the runoff starts, we get our clear-creed watershed updates as far as flow. And so, we get that from the city manager's office and Public Works and Utilities throughout the entire winter and spring, when we go to runoff. And we know, you know, what our percentage of capacity at Stanley Lake is too. So we're well aware of that throughout the entire snow season and runoff.
Oh, no, it's my turn. I was just looking to see if anybody else had anything to talk about. Christina Wilks, "The residents of Westminster take pride in our open spaces." Yes, you do. Over a third of the land in Westminster is open space. "And it gradually, as it gradually depletes with unfettered growth, what considerations are taken concerning the misplaced wildlife? Example, the new water treatment plant south of Butterfly Pavilion and east of Waverly Park." You all just passed an open space tax to continue it at the last election. And I have said to staff, if you listen in to some of our study sessions, that because we only have 5% of land left to have anything done to, that doesn't include infill. But I have said, with that being passed, if you're going to go ahead and secure anything, if there's anything left on our list of where trails need to be connected, if there's parks that we can make, someplace we don't have parks and the land's there to buy, whatever it is, because we don't tell them what to do. But my point was, you all just passed this tax. So if we're buying, we need to do it, and we need to do it soon. If it's just going to be made for maintenance, then you need to understand that also. And we need to communicate that with you because that was part of what you voted for. So we have talked to our Parks and Rec about that. We have a new person on board, Tomas, who is wonderful. He loves open space, and we all love the animals. I know, I live close to Big Dry Creek, and we still have deer coming down. We have, my pug knows that there's either raccoons. He's Mr. Clouseau walking the ditch because his flat face is always straight on the dirt and the grass, smelling everything. And I will say, "Mr. Gibbs, you gotta get going." And he has to smell his friends. So I've seen on the other side of 36, across from the Butterfly Pavilion, I've seen a pack of fox and wolves playing. We've had fox on our street. One day, I thought somebody's German shepherd got loose and realized it was a beautiful gray wolf. So we do have lots of wildlife we need to protect. They have space now to go. We need to keep that. But if there's more that we need to finish off what this city has, we need to do it. And Parks and Rec is aware of that.
As far as infills too, Mayor Protem and I hear about this because there's a property on 92nd, in front of Tri-City Baptist that caught fire a couple of years ago. There's a big sign out there now. The city was able to purchase that. We'll be able to connect that to the High Line canal that runs right through there. That'll be a great connection for that. It wasn't a big parcel, but it's one of those small things that we can pick up as they come available. Of course, with the fire and the age of that building and some of the things that are stored there, we're going to put, we're going to have to put about $100,000 in to mitigate it and then refolge it. But that'll be a great connection along that trail, and we've got a couple other spots in the works. We have to remember what we're negotiating and what we've bought, so that's one of the parcels.
Okay, the next question is from Carol Campbell. And it's interesting. It's like we're grouping the questions. So first, we had homelessness, now we're talking about water. So this is another water question. "What criteria will each of the council and mayor use to decide the final location and treatment technology used at the new water treatment plant?" treatment plant? Is Water 2025 off the table? So I think, Carol, this is a great question. Personally, I believe that, you know, sometimes on council, we tend to think that we're experts in the topic that we review or that we're hearing. But we're, we are not the experts here. No matter how much we believe we know about this, the experts are the engineers. The experts are the water engineers who have spent years and decades looking into this and learning about this. There are the superintendents who work at Semper, right, who has worked there for 30 something years. The experts are the staff that we hire to, to make sure that we have a water system that serves everyone with high quality, right? So personally, as we look at this, and by the way, we have a consultant, so we're spending another million dollars to look into this issue of what do we do with Semper? And the consultant is going to come back to us with several options that we can choose from. And the criteria that they're using, I think is spot on, or we've seen a preview of what that could be. And it's water quality. So to me, that's top, that's number one. So tracking and, so the measurement and the tracking of the quality of our water. There's resiliency, there's redundancy, there's cost, of course, that we will be looking at. But overall, I think it needs to be a holistic view of it. And we need to lean heavily on the experts, which are not us, but the engineers. So I personally would be looking at reports from staff as to what they believe from this holistic point of view, we need, and we definitely need something. So the answer is not to do nothing. I think we are all on the same page now. The answer is not that we don't need a new plant or that we can just rehab it a little bit. The answer is Semper is in dire straits. It's very deteriorated. It's running on 60s technology. And, and it's, it's, you know, it's scary if you think about it, right? So we need to do something now and fast because building it will take a long time. You know, rebuilding it, whatever option we choose will take a long time. So the sooner we can start, the safer we'll all be. And yes, we have plans. And we have drought plans. We have a lot of things. But as climate change takes shape, and we've seen it with fires, we've seen it with the air pollution, it's only going to get worse, right? And we can plan all we want. But if we don't preventively do something about our infrastructure, we are in big trouble. So council is very much looking into this. It's our top priority. And we're looking forward to the report from the consultant. I think that's coming in June.
I would add to that because the original question was, is 2025 off the table? I don't think anything's off the table. What's off the table is not having a solid plan that's affordable for the city. Because at the end of the day, yeah, we have experts that we have to listen to. I'm an expert in my day job. But I could go to my boss and say, hey, I want to spend $10 million. And they could say, we don't have $10 million. That doesn't mean I have, can't come up with a solution. You elected us all to make sure that your money is well spent and that water is delivered. Please show up when you call 911 or fire. So I agree, we all do care about this. But I, there isn't an actual, this is what we're gonna do yet. Because to Council Zadi's point, they're gonna bring back options. And that's what we've asked for. Quite frankly, for me, that's what I've been asking for since I got elected in 2017. I am pleased that we finally are actually having that conversation and we're actually looking at options. Probably the biggest, I couldn't believe it moment was that the $250 million price tag that I've been told for the last, I don't know how many years, was based off of, we think $250 million. There was no plan behind it. That's no way for us to spend your taxpayer money. That's no way for us to plan our water. We actually need a plan. We need some options for this council to say, here's the tradeoffs. That's how all of life is. That's how you folks have to do your budget. I'm sure when you go to the grocery store, you get to choose which things you have enough money for and which things you absolutely need. Council is no different in how we're gonna spend your money. So I do like the fact that we've had great, rich discussion around this. And I think at the end of the day, it's gonna deliver the best solution for the city.
All right. You know, I kind of agree with Council Baker. These questions are hilarious. So I also have a question from Carol Campbell. This one is how are development decisions made for the planner? Of course, I'll answer that. So there are two things you need to know when you have a property in Westminster and you want to build something. You need to know what your zoning is, and you know, need to know what your comprehensive plan land use designation is. Westminster is pretty unique in that we have a mandatory compliance requirement. That sounds really nerdy. Basically, you have to be consistent with the comprehensive plan. We really like our document, and that's why it's so important as to, you know, what we put into that plan, because that dictates what's, what can happen on your site. So if you are thinking of a use that is consistent with the comprehensive plan, and you have existing zoning that allows you to do that, you can either, and if you don't have existing zoning, you can change your zoning. There are two different ways that the city is zoned. About approximately south of 80th Avenue, we have straight zoning. That's like you would have an R4, you would have business or retail commercial or what have you. And you can build based on those standards that are in our code in relation to those different land use designations. If you are kind of north of 80th, then you have to do a planned unit development if you're, and there's also if you're over two acres. So any large project of substantial, any substantiality has to go through a planned unit development process. I think Mr. Healy is loving it, right? It is a negotiated land use process. You sit down with your planner and you negotiate what your zoning is going to be. And it gives the city, yes, the control over what happens. And it can be sometimes a long process because it's a negotiation. You're taking standards and you are looking at how do we build out on this site. And so that's in general what you, what you need to do. You end up with a PUD, Planned Unit Development. And then from there, you get your, you go into more detail and you do your official development plan. If you want to change the use that is on the comprehensive plan for your site, you do have to come before council and ask for that use. So it is not easy to change your zoning. You have to also come to council for, to change your zoning. So you have what you have. If you want anything different, you do need to come to council.
And from the council side, because we have a planner here that is very well versed in all of the details. But from a council side, when it comes for approval, we have a list of criteria, and it's about 20 different items that we need to make sure that is in alignment with the comm plan that says, doesn't meet traffic requirements, doesn't meet water requirements, and a lot of different things that need to go into it. And council can choose one or all 20 to meet the requirement, or it doesn't. And so that is also important that there's multiple steps once it goes through planning, that it then goes to our planning commission, which is our board-appointed, community-appointed body that will review it, give a recommendation to council. Council then hears in that hearing for the land use plan of what it's supposed to be, what their, what their plans are. And then council has a list of criteria then that we need to abide by for multiple purposes, but most importantly, legal purposes, that says that we approve or not. So just from the council perspective, obviously, we take in community input through that hearing. And that kind of lends to that quasi judicial piece as far as any land use development. When we say as a body that we aren't able to listen or hear outside of that hearing, that removes us from any kind of impartialities that we may have going into the hearing. It's just like if you would serve on jury duty, that you would make sure that you are impartial to the hearing and give it fair justice. So that's from the council side.
Next question is from Bridget Engel. Lots of rentals now owned and managed by real estate companies and large corporations. What can be done when complaints about tenants not adequately addressed by renters or the management company? So my answer is it depends. And the reason it depends, it depends on what kind of infraction you're talking about. It could be anything from contacting code enforcement to potentially law enforcement if, you know, the, you know, the renters are having problems. Or if you're on the renter's side, same thing. We have rental requirements for property owners that they have to abide by in the city. For large multifamily, they actually have to be licensed in the city of Westminster. So we'll make sure that we get more detail around exactly how you contact either side of that equation on the website after this, this meeting.
This question is from Mr. John Palmer, right back there. The question is update on opening Stanley Lake to boating. Great question. I know that this council is very interested in having a further conversation on getting boating back onto Stanley Lake. There currently is an IGA with Thornton and Northland. It's a 10-year agreement. So we would need to go back to our partners, go back to Thornton and Northland to realign those IGAs. But that's a conversation that council is willing to have and is on the docket for future conversation. I just don't know when it's coming back to council for that discussion.
I-
That's all that I have for you. I'm sorry.
I had agenda planning today and heard it would be coming back in August.
An addendum to that is we are also waiting on a complete security analysis of our number one water storage facility too. It's not gonna, it's gonna deal with all the security concerns on that. And we're getting that as well. And then we can work with our partners and then talk about the fact that there's never been a zebra or quagga mussel survive in any water bodies in Wyoming or Colorado. So I'll bring that research with that too. My question is from John Link. And we're gonna, I think we're gonna have to talk to our partners about this one as well. What time do the parking lots at 96 and Perry, the Carol Butts Park parking lots, close? And how is this enforced? And what can be done to alleviate reckless driving, garbage, and drug use at that site at night? I believe those parking lots and the gates there are controlled by Highland Hills. But then enforcement is, would be with our police department. I don't, do know personally that we've showed up there to do nonprofit events and you get to see where all the tire marks have been burnt out. So that's gotta be disturbing to the neighborhood too. So we'll get an answer on that. We don't want to seem like a broken record on enforcement. We don't have enough police officers. We don't have enough code. We don't have enough police officers to do traffic work, to slow down some of the speeding and have presence. And we're addressing that as quickly as we can. I know it's frustrating. The lawlessness of COVID in those two years showed us that there is evil in the world, and there are people who just don't have a common sense of neighborhood and caring. And so then you need enforcement. So, but thank you.
Council Baker?
John Link has the hot hand. One to two. How many apartments is enough? Bruce's answer, we're there. Sorry about that. Over the last, is it the 10 years? We just had a demographic presentation. And as you may know, Westminster, in an article reported, was something like the 21st most built apartments in a city over the last three years. It was just crazy. Well, the previous council was really committed to building apartments. They thought this was good. I disagree with this. We just had a demographic presentation with something like over the, and I'm trying to remember the best I can, over the last 10 years, there were 5,000 housing units built in Westminster, and only 1,000 of them were single-family homes. 4,000 of them were apartments. So my answer is enough. If you want to poll the council.
And the last que, oh, sorry.
I was just gonna, was just gonna add to that. You know, over two-thirds of the city's developable area is single-family housing. That's not going to change. But what has changed is the economics of just living. Who has student loans? Who has student loans and could afford to buy a house? Right. So you're renting. And so there are not as many options for people who had it pretty good. I had $100,000 in student loans. My husband has $80,000 in student loans. We couldn't buy a house without the help of my in-laws. This is because I was lucky. And so there are so many people out there that don't have that background, that don't have that help. And their only recourse is to live in an apartment, or someplace that's affordable. And in order to even allow, who has kids? Who has kids that live in Westminster? Yeah. Well, unless they're like in your house, living with you. It's very difficult for our kids who, when they grow up out of our houses, to not just stay in our basement, to be able to afford a place to live. So there are opportunities like condos, like townhomes, that, and rental units, yes, that open the door for living in Westminster. So I just want to say that, that there is, you know, we're not gonna build apartments everywhere in Westminster. But we will build them in places where we have access to jobs, we have access to transportation, and we have access to amenities, and where people can, you know, there are opportunities for people to live.
I would just add, I have student loans. I'm the son of a police officer who had four kids. My first apartment was here in the city. Costs have went up. That's not just something about housing prices. But the reality is, is the less single-family home, then the prices keep going up. So yeah, we're near buildout. But the answer isn't, hey, I want you to live in an apartment because you can't afford a home. Let's figure out why Colorado's gotten so damn expensive, so that people actually can live the American dream again. I don't, I don't buy into that. Because, again, I got my GED and I went to college. My dad is a police officer. He couldn't afford, what he did for us was, he paid for our car insurance. His deal was, if you go to college, I'll pay your car insurance as long as you go to school. I ran that as far as I could, by the way, and started my master's degree. But point being is, there is a better path. And it's not just about people being apartments. I agree, we need balance, because there are points in life where I lived in an apartment. Well, I worked my way up when I was in my first job out of college. But I worked my way up and I was able to buy the home I have with my family and raise my kids there. So there's more balance to it than just building more apartments. That's not what I want for our community.
Is the growth cap not only vertical, but horizontal as well?
We don't have a growth cap.
Five percent plus land that you have left?
That, you know, a city changes over the years, right? There's, yes, we only have about 5% of our land that is developable. And that's pretty hard to develop land. It hasn't developed for a reason. It's kind of, you know, it's hilly or it's whatever. It's expensive. People haven't wanted to sell over the years. So those are the last spots for new development. But there are areas that will change over time, like our, some of our commercial areas. You've seen a few changeover, like Builder Square. It's sat empty for a really long time. It started to change a little bit. Promenade's changed a little bit. We just have to be, and I'm not saying we have to put, you know, apartments everywhere. It's an, it's a piece of our living options in Westminster. And we need to locate them in places where it makes sense, where we have the infrastructure to serve it. But it's, it's gonna be fewer and far between. We are slowing down in growth.
And the last question for the night is from Chris Stimson. And Chris, I don't know the answer, so I'm gonna put it back into the bowl once I tell everybody what it is, just so we're sure to get an answer from staff. There was a plan to provide an app to allow residents to gauge when or if they were about to move into a higher tier of water use. Do we know when that might happen? I do not. So we're gonna put it back in the box so that staff answers this, and the answer will be on the website. Oh, you have an answer.
Well, a semi-answer. This was gonna happen before the summer, but because we changed the rates, the amount of time that it takes them to adjust the rates, push this back. And I think that they're looking to third quarter to do this. Pretty excited about, about this, because this will be a good thing to help people budget. But it is coming. I don't know the exact date, but it got pushed.
So we'll try to get, get you a date. Thank you. It is after 8:30. You have been patient. You had great questions. We still have unanswered questions that will go back to City Hall. Our communication team will get answers and put those on the website. Our communication team will get answers and put those on the website. Again, thank you, Westminster Public Schools. Thank you to our staff that's here helping run mics and get things to us. So thank you for doing that. Have a great evening. Thank you to the officer that's here tonight. Everybody have a great evening.